All right. Good evening, everyone. It is, I was gonna say Monday, it's Wednesday for Town Plan and Zoning this, for this meeting. I am Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. I am going to start with a roll call of members and then I will hand it over to our Chair to officially start the meeting. I will simply note for the record that Barbara Brenneman is absent. And then we will continue with the rest of the roll call. Patrick Carrier?
Here.
Mike Graboulas?
Here.
Scott Halsted?
Here.
Inez St. James?
Yeah.
Marcy Schwartz? Marcy, you're muted. Marcy, can you unmute and acknowledge for a roll call? Okay, we can see her. I'm gonna, I'll continue for now. John Vibbert?
Here.
Keith Vibbert?
Here.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and get started and then we'll... Marcy, when you get a chance, if you can acknowledge for a roll call.
It almost seems like she doesn't hear us.
Yeah. So, let's see if I can do this.
She's reading your message here.
Hang on one second, everyone. Give us a minute.
There she is.
Okay.
I am sorry. I had my sound off. So, yes.
All right. There we go. Perfect. All right. We've got everybody, everyone in place. Thank you. All right. And Terry, you were, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's Inez St. James, the Chair of the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Today is our meeting, Wednesday, October 13th. And we have a number of new business items, public hearing items also. Before we begin with the formal agenda, I would like to appoint Marcy Schwartz as the Acting Secretary. Is that okay with you, Marcy?
Yes, that's fine. Thanks.
And you have the call?
I do have the call. I have a question on Old Mill Commons. I think that that should have been removed. Although I'm looking up and seeing that.
Correct. We're not holding that hearing this evening.
Okay. All right. Wait. Okay. So, I won't be reading that.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thanks.
And since Commissioner Brenneman is not here, John Vibbert, I'd like to appoint you in place of Barbara. Is that okay with you?
That's okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. And finally, I would like to welcome Scott Halsted. Welcome, Scott. I know you're not new to the Commission. You have been voted in to replace Matt Paxton, who resigned. And you will be fulfilling his term that ends at the end of December of this year.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you. And a quick reminder to all Commissioners, we're here on our own time. And let's get the motions made as efficiently as possible, all right? So, we can get this moving. All right. So, Marcy, you're next with the legal notice. Thank you.
Okay. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Calpech Route application for special permit to raise poultry, 10 chickens at 759 New Britton Avenue, R20 Zone. Ed Polero application for special permit for accessory structure greater than 750 square feet at 41 Eli Road in an R80 Zone. At GDA Farmington LLC application for two lot re-subdivision of 74 Farmington Avenue, FC/FV Zone. Can somebody go on mute who has maybe got a lot of background noise?
Yeah.
Interested parties are encouraged to participate on this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington's website at https://www.farmington CT.org, Home Components, Calendar, Event, 913418, etc. A copy of this proposal is online at https://www.farmington CT.org, Government Plan, Zoning Commission Public Hearing Documents, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 23rd day of September, 2021, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Inez St. James Chair, Acting Chair.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you, Marcy. Do you want to mention three in one?
Sure. Yes, I will. So, just as a matter of housekeeping, for anyone that may have called in this evening for public hearing or interest in particular matters, we thought we'd let you know upfront that new business item three for Connecticut Spring and Stamping is being tabled to the October 25th meeting. And public hearing number one for Ed Corillo is also going to be opened and continued to October 25th. And as already noted at the top of the meeting, the, and we did not include it in the legal notice reading, anyone that's here regarding Old Mill Commons, that also is not being discussed this evening. So, with that, we can start our agenda.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. First item for new business is an application from Sheila Walton. It's a signed application for property located at 118 Plainville Avenue. And who do we have?
So, I believe, Mr. Walton, are you on the line? You can unmute your line and...
Hi.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Okay. So, yeah, we're relocating here by Sheila Marie, which was on Farmington Ave. And we're looking to put a sign up on the front of the building. And I don't know if you have questions about it. I'm, we already went through the Unionville Village and got approval there for that from them. And...
Can you confirm size and lighting and material?
Yes, it is. It's PVC. The size is, I think, give me a second to find that. Is it 88 by 27, I believe?
Okay.
Do you have that there? I guess...
Yep. We've got it in our, yeah, it wasn't filled out in the application, I think. What we've been told is 88 by 29, which I believe is 17...
88 by 29. Okay. Yep.
17 square feet.
Yes.
That's my understanding. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yep. There's 18 feet of frontage.
Okay. Yeah. 29 by 88. I'm getting 17.72. So, you said you had 88 feet of, or, sorry, 18 feet of frontage?
18 feet of, yeah, 18 feet of frontage. Just pulling up some of the information here. Let me see. It is, yeah, the picture's there. There's, the brackets are clean, overbuilt, straight angle, steel gussets. The, it's a custom bracket that's PVC. It hangs, you know, perpendicular to the building. It's mounted off of the building. And, yeah, I think, I don't know if you have questions. Again, this is, I'm, I own a recording studio, so signs are not really my expertise, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. We're gonna turn it over to the Commissioners for questions. We appreciate your presentation. All right. Patrick, you're first.
Oh, yeah. It doesn't look like it from the picture, but the sign does not overhang the sidewalk, correct? Is it within the grass in the building?
No. Yeah. You can see there's, there's a lawyer's office up the hill, if you're looking at it on the, on the right. And that actually sticks out farther than the sign does. So, there's a portion of that building that's, yeah, exactly. So, it only, it's mounted right to the building. It will only stick out. It won't come close to the sidewalk.
Okay. And lighting, there, is there any lighting on it?
Yeah, yeah. There'll be, there'll be, it'll be lit from the outside.
Okay. And when you say from the outside, it's like a light off the building or something?
Yeah, yeah. They're installing a, a light right off of the soffit there.
Okay. So, kind of pointing down?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. Correct, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
Just to go off of that, I'm just a little more curious on what type of lighting you have and what the fixture looks like.
The landlord's installing the, the light, so we're not, we're not really sure what he's gonna light it with. So... Yeah, that's, that's an answer. I really can't. It's Greg Harrington, who owned Harrington Cabinets. So, I mean, he's, yeah, he's, you know, a good craftsman, so I'm sure, and everything he's done so far looks really nice inside. So, I imagine it'll, it'll look, you know, the lights will be appropriate.
Mike, Mike, anything else?
No, just that.
Okay. How about you, Scott?
No questions at this time. Thanks.
Marcy?
Yeah. So, I can't tell from the picture, is it, is it sticking out and so then it's on both sides? Or is it flat to the building?
Yes, it's, it's, it sticks out and it's on both sides. It's a double-sided sign. So, you'll see it from, from up the hill and down. And it's, it's 27 inches, inches it comes out, or 29, sorry.
And you're saying it's not blocking anything? Like...
No. As you can see, there's, 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 if you're looking, there's a flower bed there. And then that building, the face of the joining building, which is connected, sticks out farther than the sign will.
Okay.
Doesn't come anywhere near, doesn't come any, excuse me?
The entrance is ahead of it. So, is that flower box also 27 inches? Is that...
I'm not sure the exact size of the flower box, but, but it's to the, it's up, it's to the, if you're looking at the building, it's mounted to the left of the door.
Right. But it's sticking out. And I'm curious if it sticks out further than the planter does? Because I don't know how many planters are, you know, 27 inches, or two, two feet. It's just...
Yeah.
I can't tell how it's gonna look. It's sort of a...
Maybe, can you blow the picture up a little bit for... Yeah. So, you know, it's, it's a decent-sized planter. Again, that, that wall, I'm guessing the wall on the building, the adjoining building is about, you know, four feet out. So, it's not, it's not gonna even come out that far.
So, there's nothing behind the, the sign and the next building? Because it looks like there's like a little bump out and then there's the next building.
Yeah. I'm not exactly sure.
Away at the back end of it, or...
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
Is it all the way at the back, a budding that little bump out?
No, no. It's, 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 it's hard to see in that picture, but it's, it's probably, you know, eight feet to the right of that bump out.
So, it's just kind of in the middle of that building?
Yeah. There's a whole nother, so that bump, so that building, the wall of the building, there's another unit that's, I believe, 14 feet. So, there's 14 feet from the building, from the, from the wall of that building to our unit. So, it's at least 14 feet away, or it would be on the next unit, in other words. No, no. So, the other unit. There's a unit, there's, there's a unit between, that's, that's where the salon will be. And then if you go up the hill, there's still a whole nother unit there. It's garage space at this point. But if there's 14, 15-ish feet of, of, of frontage for that garage space.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Marcy. John?
So, as, as I understand it, the sign will be attached to the building?
Yes.
It will extend out over the flower, the flower bed and over a portion of the lawn, but not as far as the sidewalk?
A little bit. You can see that that's a, that's a, you know, the picture we, that the sign, the sign guy took offline, that white pole is, is a real estate sign. So, there's enough room for that sign to be in the ground and sticking out, and it's still not in the sidewalk there. If that makes sense. Can you see, you see that?
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Yeah, exactly.
Anything else, John?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you. And Keith?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, I don't have a question about the application, but more, I guess, for Shannon, since we have a tenant, right, going in?
Correct.
Do we work with the owner of the building, or...
So, well, in this case, the tenant has the application in front of us. So, they will, I believe they've submitted building permits for tenant fit out and things. When the sign will also need a building permit, and any lighting that is done will need a building permit. So, staff will see it as it comes through the building permit process.
Okay. So, for us tonight, we, if Commissioners agree, we'll vote, well, we're voting on it no matter what. But as far as like the lighting, it's gonna, staff is gonna, the applicant or the landlord works with the staff?
It depends on who pulls the building permit.
Okay.
So, if the, so we could end up with one building permit that has both items in it, or we would end up with two building permits, in which case, we work with the individuals and make sure that the documentation is appropriate for both. So, like the sign application, we check with the building permit, make sure the dimensions are the same and materials are the same. And then the lighting, whether it's submitted with the signage or it's done separately, then we have an opportunity to make sure that it's downcasting appropriate lit, dimmers and whatnot.
Is it overkill to include staff review with this application?
You folks can add a condition if you so choose.
All right. Did all the Commissioners hear that, hopefully, the conversation?
They should have. Yeah. Everybody, yeah.
All right. So, is there, so thank you, Commissioners, for all the questions. And then, Mr. Walton, is there anything else you want to add before we take a vote?
No. I think, I think alls I would say is that we've been in town for 13 years on, on Route 4 as a business. And, you know, hopefully, the sign gets approved. We would appreciate it. And we're looking forward to the new space. And we should be open over there on December 1st. And thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, Commissioners. Thank you for all the great questions. And now it's time to make a motion and a second.
Can I ask, so, before I make the motion, the staff review, what is that exactly, Inez, that you asked for?
Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, all that we're suggesting, that is if, if the Commission so chooses, since the applicant did not have information regarding lighting this evening, you could make a motion to the effect that it's approved as presented, but any lighting must receive staff review and approval prior to installation. Something along those lines would be fine. And then, of course, as we're looking at it, if we can't come to an agreement with the applicant, then it comes back to you folks, is ultimately what happens. But the condition could leave it that any lighting is, has to be for our review and approval, and it's at our discretion. Or if you want, prior, you could simply say a condition prior to any lighting, it's gotta come back to you folks. So, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be at staff level. You can insist that it comes back to you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, I make the motion to approve the sign application by Sheila Walton, located at 118 Plainville Avenue, as presented, with the condition that any further lighting shall be approved by staff.
And a second?
Mike Graboulas, second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All right. We're gonna vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? Abstention? All right. Motion carries. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Walton.
Thank you very much. So, that means we can go ahead and order the sign? That's, we're approved?
Yeah. Yes, sir. You can. And you can also, you'll have to submit a building permit for the installation of the sign.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm sure Greg will do that. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. The next item is Alpine Energy LLC. It's another sign application for property located at 1800 Farmington Avenue.
Okay. And I believe we should have on either Peter Zelkin or Al Whiting regarding this matter?
Yes. Good evening. This is Al Whiting. Don't know if Peter is with us. Peter, are you there? I am here. Yep. Okay. Would you like to begin, or you want me to do it? Well, I'll just, I'll introduce myself. We're a family business from Mystic, Connecticut, and looking forward to bringing this gas station that's been around for decades back to life. And we're keeping everything really as is. We are just adhering to mobile standards. And I have Al Whiting from Ready Imaging, who's used to navigating, you know, town requirements to mitigate any problems. So, for instance, the, the mobile appendages, those red things you see over the dispensers, are really the only thing that's gonna be different from what you guys are used to seeing. But Al has found a way to work with mobile to get them to approve it. So, we got no additional signage on those, which is different from any other mobile synergy station. So, with that, I'll leave it to Al.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, you know, Mobile has this program, our marketing program known as Synergy. I think, I may be mistaken, but I think there's another mobile station in town that has this. You may have, you may remember reviewing it. But underneath the canopy is where these synergy components are installed. In this particular case, you'll see two photos. The top photo is the existing conditions or the before, and the photo below would be the after rendering. And you see at the beginning of, or just in front of the two dispensers, as you drive in, two red components known as waves are attached to the canopy column, are two other red components known as blades. And on the canopy column themselves are two components known as koalas. The koala is actually there to display safety and regulatory information like no smoking, stop your engine and so on. Now, these standard components have logos, word marks, messages, and advertising poster frames. We've already discussed this issue with zoning. And if we were to install these standard components with those on them, they would be considered additional signage and not approved. So, in cases like this, these components can be installed without any advertising or logos on them at all. And in a case like that, they are thought more of as architectural components rather than signage and advertising. From Mobile's point of view, it's not an all or nothing thing. So, you may, you may ask, well, why install these red things if there's nothing on them? That's a very good question. But from Mobile's point of view, it modernizes the station. It brings it up to the current mobile standards. And at least they have something there that smacks of their synergy program rather than nothing at all. So, that's a brief summary of what the proposal is. And we welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting and Mr. Zelkin. We'll turn it over to the Commissioners. Patrick?
The only question I had was what is the, the purpose of those, I forgot what you call them, the red things that go over the pump? But I think it's just, it's just something that makes every mobile look the same. Is that, I think that's how you answered that?
Well, it's a very good question. Yeah. It's a very good question. I'm not sure I know the answer except this. Mobile has probably spent tens of millions of dollars for their synergy program. Synergy is a fuel additive program. And this is a, the retail gasoline industry is a highly competitive business. It's a penny business. People will, you know, go across the street to save a penny or two. So, Mobile wants to sell this gasoline and make this synergy program known to the public. So, they've developed these components frankly to attract attention to it and help to draw people in.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
I have no issues at all with the signs, obviously. We have them already. Just more of a question for the property owner, out of curiosity. You guys purchased the back building as well. What, what are you guys planning on doing with that?
We are in the final negotiation phases of a, an ethnic grocery store back there.
Oh, cool. Great. Thank you. I was just curious.
No. Yeah. We're excited to, to get this thing back going. And we know it's been an ice ore for a while being closed. So, we're, we got the tanks coming in soon. We're anxious to get this thing reopened.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Scott?
Yeah. I don't have any concerns with this. It is the same as what we approved down the street closer to the center of town. So, no questions.
Thank you. Marcy?
So, I don't really have any questions, but is it gonna be called ExxonMobil? Or is it gonna be one or the other?
It's a mobile.
It's a mobile. Yeah.
It's a mobile. Okay. Okay. And no further questions. That's just...
Thank you. John?
I have no questions. I have...
Uh, I have no questions. I have a comment just to say I'm pleased to see that this space is being taken up and, uh, welcome to Unionville.
Thank you.
And, uh, finally Keith?
No questions. I echo John's, uh, comment. Welcome to the, to the University Center.
Oh, awesome. Um, thank you very much, Commissioners. And, um, again, welcome. Um, this place has, uh, this place, this property has been vacant for a while with a big hole in it, right? For some time now. What is your, um, when are, what's the ETA? When will this be open?
Um, I think you, you can probably see equipment is staged in the yard with tanks scheduled to arrive uh, in either a week or two weeks, at which point they'll be installed. Um, I would anticipate an opening in Q one twenty-two.
Okay. All right. Um, and, um, Mr. Whiting and, and Mr. Zelkin? Any other, anything else you'd want, uh, want to add before we take a vote?
No, not, not from my end. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. All right, Commissioners. So, um, we heard from Alpine Energy LLC and now we're going to vote. Um, so I need a motion and a second, please.
Uh, Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the sign application by Alpine Energy LLC located at eighteen hundred Farmington Avenue as presented.
Second?
Microphone a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, unanimous approval.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is going to be, uh, nice and quick. Um, it's an application from CT Spring and Stamping. Uh, this item is being moved to the October twenty-fifth meeting. We, we just need a motion and a second, um, to move that item, please.
All right. I make the motion to table the site plan application by Connecticut Spring and Stamping for expansion to the building located at forty-eight Spring Lane until the October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Second?
Microphone a second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? All right, we're good. Item moved. Thank you. Okay, uh, and the last new business item for this evening is an application from Paul Stepka to accept application for special permit for expansion of home in excess of thirty percent located at twenty-three Moses Place R twelve zone and schedule public hearing with recommended hearing date of October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. I need a motion and a second.
Okay. I made the motion to accept the application by Paul Stepka for a special permit for expansion of home in excess of thirty percent located at twenty-three Moses Place in an R twelve zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second?
Microphone a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppo, opposed? Abstention? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right. So that's it for new business if, this evening. Excuse me. Uh, now we're getting into the public hearing portion of our meeting. Um, as, uh, Shannon stated in the beginning, uh, the application or the pub, we need to open up. So I guess I open it up, right?
Uh, yes. So open or opening and continuing, but yes.
All right. So we need to, um, vote on opening and continuing the public hearing, um, on an item from Ed Corolla, which is an application for special permit for accessory structure greater than seven hundred fifty square feet at forty-one Eli Road, R eighty zone. Uh, I need a motion, please, and a second.
Does the motion have to, so it says open and table? Is that correct?
Yes, it's to continue it.
Continue.
Continue it.
Oh, okay. So just continue. Okay. So I make the motion to continue the application by Ed Corolo for a special permit for an accessory structure greater than seven hundred square feet located at forty-one Eli Road in an R eighty zone until the October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting?
Nice job. Yep, that's exactly what it is. And second, please?
Microphone a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? All right, unanimous. Move to ten twenty-five. Okay, the next item, uh, in front of us is, uh, an application from Kalpech Raoud. It's a application for special permit to raise poultry, ten chickens at seven fifty-nine New Britton Avenue, R twenty zone. And, um, who do we have presenting?
I believe we have Kalpech on the phone. Yes?
Yeah, I'm there. Uh...
Perfect. If you, uh, can just, I've got your full application is up on the screen. Um, so you can see that's everything you submitted in. I can scroll through to whatever you'd like. I know that I believe there's some photos.
Sure.
But if you could give the commission, uh, just a explanation of what you intend to do and how you intend to house the, the chickens and keep them corralled, uh, that would be a good start for us, please. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, everyone. So, yeah, this is my hobby to, to have the organic gardening. So I started veggies and now I wanted to, you know, do the, uh, chickens for my family. Like, not, not, I mean, like, let's eat chickens for eggs. So the plan for, uh, you know, keeping the chickens in, uh, the existing shed, uh, which we have it, uh, right now, uh, which is like a section feet apart from my, uh, house. And, uh, so that's, that's the existing shed we are going to use. Uh, if you scroll down, uh... Yeah, so shed size is eight point five versus twelve point four feet. Uh, if you scroll down. Yeah, so this is the shed and my, my whole property, uh, whole, uh, yard, the backyard is a fence. So chicken going to be here in the night and probably, you know, they will, they will be out, uh, in the property, uh, you know, which is fenced everywhere. So they, they can be confined to the, uh, backyard. Yeah, so that's the, uh, chicken coop. So no other construction or anything that I want to do. Uh, so it's going to be, uh, the, ten chickens, uh, in the property. And, you know, uh, if, a- any questions there or anything? Anyone wants to ask?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Raoud. Um, so, uh, we'll turn it over to the Commissioners first. Patrick?
Um, yeah, so I, have you, I'm assuming you've talked to your neighbors?
Yeah.
Has, has anybody have any issues with it?
No, I talked to both the immediate, immediate neighbors and they're good with that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mike?
Just confirming, no roosters?
No roosters, all him.
Okay. Um, this isn't our typical, uh, what we see for a, for housing for chickens. Um, how does it work with just a normal shed?
Yeah, I'm gonna, you know, uh, have this, uh, you know, inside that will be, uh, uh, in a build. Like, and I'll not use the, everything in this shed, but probably build something to, to keep those, uh, you know, like fifty percent of, uh, utility life for the coop. Uh, I, I need to work on that, you know, and the existing structure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Scott?
Yeah, just to follow up on, on Mike's question. I'm trying to picture this with the shed as well. So the, the chickens will roam the yard during the day and then they'll be closed into the shed at night. Is that how it works?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Marcy?
I have no further questions, Inez.
Thank you. How about you, John?
Uh, the shed that's going to be the, uh, uh, home for these chickens, that's an existing shed?
Yes, yeah, that's existing shed, yeah.
And what's the distance of the shed to the, uh, border?
Uh, sorry, uh, can you repeat that question?
Uh, how far away from the fence and your border?
It's a six feet, uh, apart.
And that was approved?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, when I bought the, uh, house, you know, it's, it was there. So I never moved it, actually. It, it was there like since forty years ago.
Okay, no questions. More?
Thank you. And Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. And I do not have any questions either. Uh, so thank you, Commissioners. Since, uh, this is a public hearing, um, so the public has an opportunity to ask, uh, questions of Mr. Raoud. Is there anyone online? Shannon?
Uh, we'll check. Let's see. I'm not seeing, but I will ask if there's anyone that has called in to speak, uh, or ask questions regarding this application to please raise your hands using the feature in Zoom and you will be, uh, acknowledged and allowed to address the Commission with your questions.
That didn't look like it, right?
No, there is, no, no one has raised their hand or made any indication they wish to speak regarding this matter.
Okay, so nothing from the public. All right. So, um, uh, Commissioners, uh, anything else you need from the applicant before I close the meeting? Okay, it looks like we are all set. Okay, Shannon, remind me. So I get to close the meeting now?
You can close the hearing.
Yeah.
And then, uh, same, and we'll need a, a motion and second and discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, you're right.
Um, again, this is, um, public hearing. Um, we're reviewing application for, from Mr. Kalpech Raoud. Um, the Commissioners had a chance to ask questions. There's no one from the public. So at this point, I'm going to close this item. Um, and we need to vote on that.
We, if you folks are ready, you absolutely can. So we can do a motion and a second.
Clearly, I'm ready.
All right, sorry. Okay, good.
Thank you. All right. If, uh, if the Commissioners have no questions, um, we can, uh, make a motion and second to vote on the application?
Madam Chair, I have one more question. Um, I, maybe I should have asked it before you closed, but I should remember this. We've done a ton of these. Um, uh, just to keep it the same, have we been asking to revisit this in a year? Or is that, who, does anybody, anybody else have the answer to that?
We have on a, on occasion, um, Commissioners. So it's, it's at your discretion. Uh, quite honestly, um, you know, unless we are, we as staff are getting, um, complaints, then it, it, these all have, have pretty much automatically rolled at the one-year point. So, and if we're getting complaints, then we're following up with them. Uh, as they come in, we're not waiting to the one-year point. So, um, it, it, it's really not necessary, but you're welcome to do that if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, all right, so I'll make the motion. I make the motion to approve the application by Kalpech Raoud for a special permit to raise poultry, ten chickens at seven fifty-nine New Britton Avenue in an R twenty zone as presented.
Thank you. And second?
Microphone a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? All right, application is approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Raoud.
Yep.
Shannon, am I screaming? I feel like, no, I'm okay. All right. Okay, good. In my head, I'm screaming.
It's just tough to, and it's tough to know because you project so that everybody can hear.
All right.
I think you're fine.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, next, uh, item, public hearing item is an application from JDA Farmington LLC. It's an application for re-subdivision of property at seven eighty-four Farmington Avenue. And who do we have?
I believe we have Mr. Tom Daley on the phone.
We do. And, uh, thank you to the Commission and, um, Town Staff. Uh, for the record, Tom Daley with SLR. Uh, we have an application before you this evening for a re-subdivision. This is the Chase Bank that you'll see, uh, everybody driving by, watching the construction, uh, going on. Um, as you recall, we were before this Commission. Uh, we got the Chase Bank approved. At, but part of that application, there was a relocation of a portion of the old building in the back. I think there was some determination that it was a, a significant building, had some historic precedence, and, uh, it made sense to relocate it. So that's the white, uh, brick building that's been relocated to the rear of the property. Uh, so the, the, the application before you this evening is for a re-subdivision to create two lots. Uh, we would have one lot for the Chase Bank and then we would have one lot for the, uh, the rear building. And I would note is, uh, this is a re-subdivision because essentially Backage Road did sub, did the subdivision and broke, uh, um, these parcels into smaller pieces. So, uh, we've worked closely with Town Staff. We've addressed their comments, uh, to what I believe is to their satisfaction. Um, we've also had the attorney working with Town Staff to make sure there's cross easements, uh, enabled, uh, between the two properties. Uh, but it's actually pretty straightforward. It's, it's probably one of the simpler applications I've ever presented to you. But, uh, once again, so it's, uh, two parcels, uh, to accommodate the two buildings. Uh, the large part, larger parcel would be for the Chase Bank building and the smaller one would be that, uh, white relocated building you can see at the rear of the property. Uh, with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the Commission has.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. All right, uh, Patrick?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Scott?
No questions.
Marcy?
So I, I'm just, the existing building, as you're showing it in the back, that is the historic building? So that's what got moved over there?
That's correct.
Okay. And then where's parking for all of these guys, actually, for, but the front and the back?
Yeah, so as Shannon's, and this is just, this is, as if you've been by, the parking hasn't been finished. So this was, uh, somewhat of an as-built, but there's parking almost L-shaped wrapping all around, um, this site. This, some of the parking will fall on the Chase Bank property and there will be cross easements that allows this, uh, the smaller building to park on that property. It's, but essentially it's a pretty small building. So we're expecting it only to require, I think, two spaces or something like that.
And, and they'll be close to the Chase Bank building, is what you're saying?
Uh, there's actually parking right adjacent to this proposed building, yes. Right where Shannon, right where Shannon has the, the cursor, there's a couple parking spaces right there.
Okay, okay. All right. Now, those are my questions. Thank you. Thanks.
Marcy? Thank you. John?
Uh, yes, uh, going back to the, uh, parking for a moment, the, uh, smaller building in the back, the historic building, uh, if that were to be sold off to a, uh, another person, do, would that old, new owner have parking rights onto a larger property?
Yes, they would. Um, we, um, the applicant's attorney has been working directly with Shannon. Um, we have actually put together a draft, uh, easement agreement. Um, and there you go. So Shannon actually made us put a, asked us to put a, a note on here. There will be a reciprocal easement that allows the, both buildings to pass and repass, park on both sites and then, you know, work in concert together.
Thank you.
And that easement will be, i- i- if this Commission chooses to approve it, um, that, that easement will be filed on the lane records.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Keith?
I have no questions. Thank you.
All right. And I do not have any questions either. I agree, it seems pretty straightforward. Um, but this is a public hearing. Um, so let's, uh, give our public an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Daley.
Uh, and I'll ask the same question. If anyone has called in that wishes to speak regarding this application or ask any questions or offer comments, to please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the Commission. And, no, and you're seeing no indications whatsoever, uh, hand raising or otherwise, so...
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioners, before we close the meeting, any more questions for the applicant? We're good. Okay. So, um, the item from JDA Farmington LLC, um, is closed. And now we need a motion?
Uh, Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the application by JDA Farmington LLC for re-subdivision of seventeen, uh, seven eighty-four Farmington Avenue as presented.
And second?
Microphone a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries unanimously. You are all set, Mr. Daley.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Shannon, and you are on for the last item?
I'm on for the last item. So, uh, and just for the... So, and just for the record, because I know this was not included in the legal notice that was read this evening, but it was part of the legal notice that was read at the meeting prior in September, at September 27th, and it was opened and continued on the 27th. So this pertains to an item that we need to change in our zoning regulations. It's with respect to Article 4, Section 15, a fire protection regulation. This regulation was put in place, I'll say, prior to the expansion of our current fire regulations that our fire marshal oversees. And also, they tie in at times with our building regulation. And so at the time that this was enacted back in 91, they, those regulations weren't as robust. So this was put in place at that time. It now is no longer relevant, really, and at times causes conflict between what's required in those state regulations versus what we are asking for. And we have, as has been included, we have legal opinion from our council explaining that really, we can't have a regulation that is more stringent than the state fire code and building code. And so he has said that we, we could put a clause in there. Really, at this point in time, staff is recommending that we simply remove this regulation to eliminate this conflict between that, those state codes and our zoning regulation. It's, it's not necessary at this point, and it really isn't enforceable. So, so that's what's before us. Obviously, if there's any questions, I'm happy to, certainly happy to address them for you. There's also, I will point out, as part of the agenda review that Catherine had done for all of us and submitted last week, there is a potential motion. So you can use that as a guide, should you agree to move this and advance this. And as we know, it's, we need a, a date that it's effective. So, so that's all part of the, the drafted motion that's included in the agenda review. And with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Let's go through the, roll. Patrick?
Oh, yeah, Shannon, so is that, is that the norm? So when there's a state code like that, the town cannot ask for more than the state? Is that how I'm understanding that?
I'm going to say typically, not in all case. It depends on how the regulation is worded and what, and what particular element we're discussing. There are some, some things that we can be more stringent on in this particular case. This, this is not one of them.
Okay, yeah, that's my only question. I, I didn't, yeah, I thought that, I didn't think that was an all or nothing answer, I guess, or, or the way it is.
It's in this particular case, and we'd have to dive into some of the nuances of what Attorney De Crescenzo shared. Some of it has to do with case history and case law and other court decisions that have been made regarding similar matters along these lines.
Right, thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
I have no questions, thank you.
You've got it, Scott?
No questions, thanks.
Marcy?
Sometimes my space bar, yeah, I'm here. Sometimes my space bar works, and sometimes it doesn't. I don't know. So I apologize, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
John?
No questions.
And Keith?
I have no questions, thank you.
All right, I do not have any questions. It makes sense, right? Since we're in conflict with the state law, so, okay, so thank you, Shannon, for that lovely presentation. And then, let's see, is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment, ask questions about this item? Raise your hand.
And I'm not.
Nothing, okay.
I'm seeing any hands raised, no indication of anyone needing to make a comment regarding this matter.
Okay, so I, I think at this point, where commissioners had a chance to ask questions, I think at this point, it's appropriate to close this item regarding fire protection from Town Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, I need a motion and a second, please.
Okay, Patrick Carrier, I'm not going to use the one from, from the agenda review because honestly, I kind of don't really know how with the warehouse and how to tie it in, so I'll give it a shot. I make the motion to approve the application by the Farmington Town Planning and Zoning Commission for a tax amendment to the zoning regulations to remove Article 4, Section 15, fire protection with an effective date of 15 days after the publication of the notice of decision.
Okay, and a second?
Mike or both?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Go, Shannon. All right, so we're done with the public hearing. How about our planners' report?
Planners' report, I have one item for all of you. We've been contacted by Pomona Pete's at 55 Mill Street. Given the nice weather we've been experiencing for October, kind of the unusually nice weather, they requested that they be allowed to extend their outdoor music, which had originally been permitted from May to September. They asked to extend into October. Of course, they asked this after the September meetings. Well, the first time we're having an opportunity to chat with you all about this is, is this evening. So we, you know, as far as I know, it's been relatively quiet with comments from neighbors. I don't think it's been completely quiet, but it would seem that over the last few weeks, it has been quieter than it perhaps was during the summer. And so we opted to, you know, allow that to continue. Obviously, if there's any objections, then we can relay that. But my guess is the inclement weather is going to be on us before we know it in a true New England fall. And November will be approaching, and this is going to go by the wayside, I would think, so. But that's, it's an FYI, obviously, if anyone has any concerns or feels we should be doing something different, then happy to discuss it.
Any comments from commissioners?
Just one question, so that was approved back in June, I think. Was that June? Does anybody know that answer?
Uh, it, I think.
Yeah.
It was around then, anyway, I believe, yeah. So, yeah, I know there was some, there was a lot of people for it. There was some pushback, and you pretty much answered my question. I was wondering if anybody was, if anybody did call and complain or if there was any, you know, police involved or anything. I'm assuming that's a no, that's one question. And then the other thing was, so they came back. Now, is that going forward? Do they have to keep coming for an extension?
My understanding is it was for this summer. I'd have to go back and take a look, but I believe the approval was for this summer only. And then if they want to do it again next summer, then we'll have them come in, and then at that point, you folks can decide as to whether or not this is something we want to allow in perpetuity going forward, if we want them to check in each spring or check in one more spring. But my understanding, again, I'd have to go back and read everything, but it, my understanding is it was, it was something for this summer. Some of it tying to some of the restrictions with COVID and just wanting to make sure that, we're trying to be flexible, but be mindful of the residential neighbors around them as well. And we'd have to see whether it's really germane to have this continue next summer as well.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I don't have any issues with, with the staff level because like you said, it's going to be short. It can't be much longer, that's for sure.
Right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any commissioners? Questions, comments? We're good. Shannon, I do have a question for you. So our bridge in Unionville, I noticed the equipment is gone, but it's still, is the bridge being worked on? Do you know?
I, I don't know with 100% certainty. I could check with our Director of Public Works. My loose understanding is they were supposed to still have it painted this fall. Obviously, we're well aware of the temperature and weather constraints associated with that. Not that this summer was great for getting any painting done anyhow. Spoken from someone who's tried to finish painting her house this summer. So it has been a challenge, even if, regardless. But my, my understanding is they were trying to get it done anyway, but I could check in with the director to get an update and just follow through for you folks.
You know, it caught my attention because the equipment just, all of a sudden, is like just gone from the site. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, so that's it, Shannon, from you?
That's all I have for this evening, yeah.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Shannon?
Um, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time. I, I have a question, I guess, for the commission. So typically, and as you were doing all the motions, and it's been tricky with the, obviously, with Zoom. We kind of, you know, you can't really see each other, so nobody knows if they're going for it. How do we want to handle this going forward? I don't have a problem with doing them at all. It's just that, obviously, I want to give the opportunity to others if they want to. So I didn't, I kind of wanted to get a feeling from, from the commission on that.
So just my second meeting, right? Acting as chair, I've been using, I've been just going through all of you in alphabetical order by last name. And yes, you are always the first one, if we were in the room, which we probably will not be, right, this year? Shannon?
Uh, at this, I don't anticipate going back live for a little bit. So at, at this particular point in time, the governor has extended our ability to continue to hold meetings virtually through April 2022. Town Council is live. We had tried, I, you know, ZBA had gone live for hybrid for a few meetings. Wetlands, we tried, they weren't as interested in coming back in. And what I will say is, from a technology and staffing standpoint, going, going from all in-person was here at our base level, going to Zoom took it up a level, and going to hybrid takes it up another level and requires additional technology and additional staffing. So, which we're happy to do if we have, I, I would say, basically, full buy-in, with the exception of, you know, a handful of those that need that exception for whatever that reason may be. But, and also with the staffing change, we, we kind of, I'll be honest, we put the brakes on it with ZBA and Wetlands for now. So I would say at least through December, we're going to stay virtual. If we want to have a conversation about it in January about trying hybrid, I'm happy to, to try to accommodate that. It is possible. But it really needs to be a joint decision with the majority of you wanting to come in. It's not really worth it to have applicants in in the council chambers and the commission home on, on Zoom. So, and as long as the governor's allowing it, then you, we certainly have that flexibility. We can continue with, with Zoom.
And going back to your question, though, Patrick, sitting here, you know, now, last couple of meetings, maybe it's a Zoom thing, but there's definitely a delay. And look, I want to get out of here as quickly as you do too, I'm sure. But there's definitely a delay in whenever the presentation is done and the motion, and I don't know if it's technology or something else. So thank you for stepping up in the last couple of meetings, but like, I don't think, to me, it matters. We just, I would love to move this meeting along even more, if you get my drift. Sorry.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll just leave it that, I'll leave it at that. I don't mind doing it. I just, again, I don't, I just don't know if somebody else wants to. I mean, I don't know.
I like hearing your voice, Patrick. I think you do.
I was going to say, I mean, I don't really care either way, so.
You're doing a great job, Patrick.
Yeah. Oh, my God, it sounds like you're stuck holding the bag. Go, Patrick.
All right, so that's fine, I'm okay with that, as long as everybody else is okay, that's all. It's all perfect, thank you.
But it's, yeah, it's up for grabs, you know, if you feel strongly about one thing or another. But thank you, Patrick, for doing it, and it looks like your teammates are very happy with your performance also. So anyway, thank you, and thank you. Anything else for Shannon? Are we good?
Shannon, what's going on with Old Mill Commons? Is that coming up again, or?
No, absolutely, that's fine, happy to answer that. So they opted to hold off this evening. Catherine and I were going through some of the legislative updates that took place over the summer, and it came up because I shared it with ZBA at our September meeting and ran through all of the updates. And in there, there is a discussion about extension of permits that had been approved during COVID time, if you will, and even some prior to COVID time. But now COVID has impacted the ability to implement those permits. So with that, we let Attorney Hoab know, as he is the attorney for the applicant, and then we also reached out to Bob De Crescenzo. And apparently, we aren't the only community asking, and it's a rather hot topic and is being debated at the state level for a variety of reasons. So Attorney De Crescenzo, I poked at him yesterday. He responded. It sounds like he's, I should have a letter officially indicating that the approval because of the executive orders would be extended at least a year to a year and a half, if not more. He's still working through a few nuances. But in which case, it would obviate the need then to have a public hearing at this time to extend that permit. So we're holding, Attorney De Crescenzo is aware that we're also up against a clock that Old Mill Commons, if they are going to move ahead, need to do so at the November, at the latest, at the November meeting. So I anticipate having that letter in hand in the next few days, and then we can react to it accordingly. But that's really the status. So we're trying, basically, what we don't want to do is, you know, we're all forgetting permit fees and whatnot and, and helping the, the town, but to get a permit fee when it's not warranted, particularly for something as sizable as this, it's just, you know, I wanted to make sure we were doing the right thing. So we're, we have them double-check on that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the update.
Good question, Mike. I did not mean to snicker when I did that. Anyone else? Okay, we're good. Now to continue with the Aquifer, do I close this portion, or do we continue?
No, so we're going to, and actually, I'm going to add in, Mr. Bruce Searson, and he's reminding me, just for the Pomona Pete's and 55 Mill Street. Apparently, the approval was in perpetuity, so it wasn't just for this summer. But the extension that we're allowing for October, so their approval was from May to September, the extension for October is a one-time. But apparently, the, the outdoor music was every summer, May to September. So, he corrected me on that, so.
Still think it's fine.
So just wanted to make sure, so we had it updated for the record. So no, we will, if you could, we'll go minutes and adjourn, and then reopen as a separate meeting, similar to what we would do for Wetlands and then Conservation Commission? Same thing.
You're nice. All right, so thank you, commissioners. We're just wrapping up the plan and zoning portion. We need a motion and a second for minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 27th, 2021 Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second?
Mike or both?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? All right, meeting minutes are approved. So Shannon, it's 8:09. The meeting is adjourned for Plan and Zoning Commission. It's Aquifer, Aquifer, no, how do you pronounce it?
I mushed it all together. I don't know that idea, right?
Okay, and it's Aqua for Protection?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, there it is. All right. All right, everyone, this is Inez St. James, and we're here on behalf of Town of Farmington Aquifer Protection Agency. Today is Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, and we have some new business items to discuss.
Okay. So I have, so many of you probably don't even realize that Town Plan and Zoning also serves as our Aqua for Protection. that, uh, Town Plan and Zoning also serves as our Aquifer Protection Agency. We have a number of aquifers in town. Uh, they are, we've, uh, I'm gonna try and, I gotta drop down my nears, guys that are in my way. Hang on one sec. We have three aquifers in town, and one of them is the Farmington Industrial Park Aquifer, which is on the south end of town over by Spring Lane and Hyde Road. We have our Sand and Stone Aquifer, which is up along, um, Brickyard Road. And we have a Charles House Aquifer in Unionville. So this is our town map on our online GIS, and these are the three aquifer areas. So this is the FIP Aquifer. This is the Charles House Aqu-, uh, sorry, this is Sand and Stone Aquifer, and this is the Charles House Aquifer. So, um, what happens is the, uh, industrial properties, if it's a residential property, there's automatically a residential exemption. None of those properties, of residential property, did not have to, um, to register with the town at the time that these aquifers were, were put in place and approved at the state level. These are delineated, uh, by Connecticut DEEP, and the delineation then is put forth to the town. We have to approve the mapping, and then we are obligated to notify all the industrial properties within a given area and have them register. And they are required to register every five years, and so this is a re-registration. So, uh, for FIP, we have, uh, I've got four properties that are being, uh, re-registered this evening, and this is just because these, these, um, registrations have been submitted, the fees, everything's in, everything's complete, and I've had an opportunity to review them. So there will be more coming, um, and we'll just take them as they come, so that, uh, we can, I can start to clear them, them off and get them their new certificates. Um, and when we do this, not only they are issued a certificate, but, uh, Connecticut DEEP is notified, their Aquifer Protection Branch, as well as Connecticut Water is notified. So on this evening is 8:20, New Britain Ave. is Dayon Manufacturing. Uh, we have 8:24, New Britain Avenue is Parr Manufacturing. And then over here on Spring Lane, we have, uh, 33 Spring Lane for Mallory Industries and 45 Spring Lane for Edmunds Manufacturing. The companies are obligated, uh, for each, every five years, they have to fill out the registration form. Uh, here's a sample one. This is the, the one I have for, uh, what did I just open? 8:20 for Dayon Manufacturing. It's all the same. It's a State of Connecticut form. So they fill out all their, basically, it's providing us their contact information and assuring us that they have best management practices in place in the event of a spill, and that they have spill prevention measures in place for their manufacturing facilities and their storage of their, um, really their solvents, oils, et cetera. So things that we don't want leaching into the ground and into the aquifer. Um, and so they all have basically some similar type plan depending upon the actual, um, industry and what they're actually working with on a day-in and day-out basis. Um, so they, they are all similar. It's all the same application form. It's just some of them are a little different with respect to their materials handling that they, uh, they have to implement, so. Um, so with that, we have the three. Um, I have all three application forms. They are, like I said, they are all very similar. I'm happy to go through them. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then it, what I'm looking for really is that, uh, we need, uh, acceptance, and, uh, they're ready for approval for renewal of the registration. So you can, we can undo them, and the, the Commissions prior to have done them as a block. So I would do, you could do all of the FIP Aquifer registrations, um, for acceptance and renewal of their registration, and then that's all, that's all really all I need. But I'm happy to answer any questions, or if anyone wants more information than what I've provided.
Let's do the, um, roll. Patrick, do you have any questions?
None. I mean, nothing is really, so nothing has changed, right? I mean, is, is kind of what I'm getting out of this, on, on any of these?
In, in these particular cases, uh, for these four, and even the three that are coming up, there is nothing that has changed, but it is an opportunity. You know, in some cases, there, you know, operations managers have changed, safety managers have changed, uh, who they contact with, um, for their spill prevention. It's an, it's an opportunity for them to really look at their documentation and make sure that it gets updated, and then provide us that updated information. But there are no whole-scale changes. There's slight nuances like that with personnel changes, but that's expected over a five-year period.
Right, and if there was, I mean, that's something that you would, you would probably talk about, right? So, so for this, there's little changes. They submitted their information, and, and other than the usual stuff that'll change over a five-year, there's nothing big, correct?
Correct, yeah. If there was anything major, I wouldn't even be with you this evening. If there was still something, you know, problematic or notable, because anything major, um, a- actually would require a permit, and that's a whole different, that's a whole different animal. So, um, yeah, there's some that I'm still working on to clarify that their operations haven't changed substantially that would warrant a permit as opposed to simply a re-registration. A permit then would require a public hearing as an Aquifer, as your Aquifer Protection Agency.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mike?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Scott?
Is there any kind of, like, inspection, Shannon, that's done, or is it just kind of them putting procedures in writing?
It's really, it's them putting procedures in writing. Um, we, yeah. On occasion, I have been in, um, with a handful of them if there's things that needed clarification. Uh, but no, it's making sure the procedures are in, are in writing, and quite honestly, these facilities have quite a few checks and balances. Most of them also have other state permits and, um, that are, that are needed, um, and, and reporting requirements that they have, so. That's, that's where we leave it.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Marcy?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
So have all the parcels been notified that they have to do this re-registration?
So all of the parcels that are required to re-register have, as I noted. Um, you, you can see this is a large, large area, right? So these are residential, don't have to, and even some of the industrial, um, unless they are one of 29 categories for uses and material handling, they don't have to. So if it's an office use, or say, like, our soccer, FSA Soccer, they don't have to register because they don't have any material handling that would be a detriment to the aquifer. So it's only, one, it has to be industrial, and two, it has to be one of the, um, regulated uses for the aquifer. And yes, they were all notified in writing regarding this re-registration. They were asked to have re-registration in for October 1st. Most of them have. There's a few that I'm gonna have to follow up with. Um, and then quite honestly, it's just me going through the paperwork and, and managing the information coming in, and some of it is, is coming in faster than I can, uh, process it. But yes, everyone was notified.
So in this FIP area, uh, we, we've received four re-registration requests. Um, and we, there are maybe a few more, but most of the parcels don't require the re-registration?
Uh, correct. Most of them didn't require registration to begin with, right? So this whole area of town is in the, is in the FIP Aquifer, but this is all residential land. So this is down Plainville Avenue. So if I click on, here's our zoning. Okay, so this is R20, R30, this is, uh, RDM, this is the, uh, Farmington Chase, this is R12. So there is no registration for residential property. So the CR zone and C1 zones do require registration, and then again, from that, it depends on whether or not they are participating, their use is a regulated use.
All right, so once we move forward with these four, we're expecting a few more, but not many?
I'd have to look, I have a whole spreadsheet of them. Be, so FIP was originally implemented in 2008, before I even got here in Farmington. Um, and then I, I can't remember their original. So that's when the mapping was done. Uh, I did re-registration with them in, uh, 2016. I also had to do Sand and Stone Aquifer in 2016, and now everybody's being re-registered in 2021. I honestly couldn't tell you. I think there's, uh, somewhere 10, 10 to 15 properties in total in the FIP Aquifer, and I'm using a rough estimate from memory. And in Sand and Stone, I want to say there's less than 10. Somewhere between 5 to 10 in the Sand and Stone, Sand and Stone. I'm just going from memory.
All right, thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, John. And Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. I do not have any questions either. Um, so you have the agenda?
I can pop the agenda back up, yes.
For Patrick.
Yep, so there's the agenda, and again, you, uh, we can take them individually, or you're welcome to do them all at once for, what I'm looking at is the review and acceptance of the registrations for the FIP Aquifer for these four properties and the issuance of their renewal registration.
All right, so we need a motion and a second?
So do I have to read every single one of those properties, though, if I do it as a block?
You can do it as a block and, um, either maybe give me the corporation name or the street address, if you don't mind.
Okay, so, okay, so it sounds good, all right. So I make a motion to approve the renewal and re-registration of the, oh, boy. All right, I'm gonna need some help with that one. How should that one go?
Uh, renewal and re-registration for the following properties in the FIP Aquifer.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the renewal and re-registration for the following properties in the FIP Aquifer, uh, Aquifer. 1820 New Britain Avenue, 1824 New Britain Avenue, 33 Spring Lane, and 45 Spring Lane.
Thank you, and a second, please.
Microphone, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. All right, you are approved.
All right, and then the next one, the next grouping is Sand and Stone. And so that's up here, off of Brickyard, and then, of course, it crosses over into, uh, up, it's south of the, uh, Farmington River. So, uh, there are no properties south of the Farmington River, because we're all, this is, this is all residential here. And these, C1, uh, I believe they're all part, yeah, this is all Tungus Mead, so there was nothing here for Tungus Mead. Um, this is mostly regis- residential, and there's a handful of properties. We've got CR and C1 up in this area. And the properties that are on the agenda this evening, I have 145, um, 146 is also 144. Uh, it's Farmington Motorsports. And then I have 1361 down on Farmington Avenue is the Midas, uh, property by the, trust all, why am I, I'm not getting that? It's right here, 1361, uh, where the Midas is.
Inez?
So those are, those are the three properties.
Yes.
So this is, this is John Vivid?
Yes.
Uh, could I recuse myself from this, this discussion?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Sure. So.
So it's the same, I, it's the same type of applications, um, that we just looked at. So Sand and Stone, I, I can open this one up. It happens to be for the 145. Um, and again, they're providing their owner information and contact information. Um, the type, so these are all the categories as part of the application. The categories of regulated uses in this case, uh, it's the advanced equip, uh, advanced equipment, and they do like lawn mower and a snowblower repair, that type of repair. So it's repair, maintenance of vehicles with internal combustion engines. Um, they're certifying to best management practices, uh, and I think they had, that they, basically, there's been no changes. So I told them they didn't have to redo, you know, there's no sense redoing all the paperwork if there's no changes to their materials management plan. Um, and there's been no changes to their facility or operation. So I simply asked for a statement certifying that, um, rather than have them go through and pay an engineer to certify that, so. So that's where, that's where we are with this. And, uh, like I said, it's the same, basically the same for the other ones as well.
Uh, can you flip over to the agenda? So how many?
Oh, yes. So there were three. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so unless, thank you. Sorry, I did not mean.
No, 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 you're, you're good. Yep.
Um, so, uh, so I understand John will be abstaining from the,
Yep.
from this vote, but unless, uh, there's some new questions, I think we're ready for a vote. You guys agree? All right, how about a motion and a second, please?
Okay, do you have to, uh, reappoint somebody, or no?
No, because he's an alternate.
No, well, he was in place of, we still have enough, or no?
No, he was, uh, I, Keith, uh, we could, uh, correct. So he was for Barbara, so you could appoint Keith unless Keith, you need to.
Yes. Keith, how, how do you stand with this application?
I'm, uh, ready to serve if needed.
Okay.
Okay, so for this matter, um, you're a voting member?
Yep, for Barbara.
For Barbara.
Sounds good.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, and thank you, uh, Patrick. See, you're so good at this. Keeping us on track. All right, how about a motion, please?
All right. I make a motion to approve the renewal and re-registration of the following properties in the Sand and Stone Aquifer. 145 Brickyard Road, 146 Brickyard Road, and 1361 Farmington Avenue.
Okay, and second?
Microphone, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we have John as abstention, right? All right, so we are good, and.
Okay, and that's, that's all I have this evening.
All right, so I, what?
And there's no minutes, and there's no, yeah, so there's no, you know, you did adjourn this portion, and then it would adjourn the meeting as well.
Uh, I'm ready. All right, so it's 8:28. Well, meeting is adjourned for the Aquifer Protection portion. Thank you.
Okay.
So we are good until 10:25, right?
Until October 25th is the next meeting, yes, so just shy of two weeks at this point.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
You too. Thank you.